Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the December 7th, 2020 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We do have the full school committee in attendance this evening, and we will start with our first order of business, which is approval of minutes if I could have a motion piece.
Move to approve the November 16th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion's been made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. Was that Antonella? I'm sorry. Sarah, okay, thank you. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Okay, one more, please.
Move to approve the November 16th, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by that discussion. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero as well. Okay, we're going to move forward with an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. If you would like, and you are in the audience this evening on our Zoom meeting, you may raise your hand, and we will call on you. This is the only opportunity during the meeting that we'll have for visitors to address. So if Mr. Mackey, when you have a chance, if you can bring in the first guest, please.
Yep, I'm trying to get the Facebook up, but I have Kelly Eddy.
Do you want me to hold off a minute, Mr. Mackey?
I moved her over, but.
In terms of Facebook, though, you wanted to get. Hi, Kelly.
Oh, sorry. It did a weird thing, and it said I was rejoining.
Yeah, you are. Can you just hold on one second if you can just give me one minute? But hang on here, though. Mr. Mackey, you're upset?
No, it's hung up, so there doesn't seem to be anything I can do about it. I'm going to log off and try it again, but.
I'm going to move forward then.
Keep going, yep.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Kelly, how are you doing today?
I am good. How are you? Good evening.
I'm well, thanks.
Everybody. So exciting time here of being able to spend some time talking with you guys. One of the things that I'd like to ask for consideration on next week is that the school committee considers continuation of our current remote format for a bit longer. I know our teachers and administrators have worked tremendously hard to bring us this far with the consistent, robust, and equitable learning plan, and I would agree that not one parent or educator would say that they don't want the kids back in the classroom. But I feel like we need to wait for the right time, and we may have missed that window in the fall. But moving from our current model, I'm concerned will bring us backwards in the learning that is happening. I also feel like we can see a light at the end of the tunnel, especially with the arrival of vaccines. Let's get through these winter months of the cold and flu season and see if we can continue with some regularity of learning without interruptions that I'm concerned will occur with in-person learning. I know that there are a lot of families that are content to hang in there with this remote model. It has become a normal routine, and they are quietly doing it day in and out, and I feel with great success. I'm concerned that the in-class learning will not be more enriching in the pandemic model due to safety policies that will probably override any interactive nature of learning. I'm not sure exactly what the format will be with the live stream, but lessons probably will still be content computer accessible because it has to be able for in-person students as well as the remote students. You know, the classwork won't be what normal classwork activities would be, probably limited collaboration, which is something that we are seeing on a regular basis in a Google Classroom breakout, and also with the ability to enjoy such specials as orchestra or band, chorus, tiered reading and pullouts, all things that potentially won't be able to occur in an in-person format during this pandemic setting. Couple other points would be that the live streaming portion would have a teacher teaching, obviously in the classroom, to a remote camera with a mask on. So my concern is the ability for the students at home to understand well, and you know, facial expressions are pretty important, especially to kids learning with what the teachers are trying to put across. Couple other points, and I know that we have a limitation on minutes here, so if someone needs to tell me when to stop, please do, because I'm just going to keep going with a few of my points.
You're getting there, Kelly, but go ahead.
Okay, so I'm also concerned that the students, you know, everyone that says opt into cohort C, if you're concerned about some of these in-learning processes, but I'm also concerned that the students that do choose this are going to have less of an experience than what they have been currently experiencing, especially because what we've had has been very robust, and I'm afraid that a lot of them will lose that interaction, will struggle and become frustrated because I don't know how well the interpersonal and interacting will be with the teacher teaching to both in-person and remote at the same time. Couple other questions, just really quick about school safety, or what the dusty recommendations are for proper ventilation with our HVAC, if we have current reports, inspection reports for all the schools, what will the lunch protocols be for students and bathroom usage be-ability for students, especially lunch protocols, if kids are going to be eating in a classroom with their masks off. That kind of brings us back to what is kind of not recommended by the CDC at this time in terms of being in an enclosed area with masks off. What are the contact tracings? And basically, overall, the questions that exist on in-person are more great than the fact that what we have had thus far has been a safe, equitable, and consistent education for our district. The school committee has made an amazing point to the state because they have, you have said that we have tremendous learning happening here, and that this learning should continue in this format for a little bit longer. We're almost there. You know, maybe we can look at in-person for March after February break with the arrival of warmer weather, and hopefully you guys are going to be right where we need to be for our district and these kids.
Okay, Kelly, I appreciate your input and your willingness to speak tonight, and we will discuss more of those points tonight. And again, thank you for your words tonight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. How you doing, Coach?
Hey, how you doing, Greg?
Doing well.
Good. So I'd like to speak on behalf of my family and many other folks who are for the hybrid learning process. Good evening, Board. My name is Mitch Knowles. I'm a parent of two school-aged children here in East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. I am also a school counselor in a neighboring district that is currently using a hybrid model that has been successful for our students and families. I'm here today to advocate for the option to return to school for January 15th. As a school counselor, I realize that this certainly, you know, is not the decision for every family, and whether it's because of pre-existing medical conditions that exist in the household, or that they frequently, you know, visit relatives, personal police, etc. And I don't believe that anyone should be forced to return to a hybrid model if they so choose. However, I do feel that there are valid reasons for giving families an option to return back to in-person learning. For many students who struggle with various social, emotional, and learning needs, the positive impact of an in-person learning and support cannot be replicated, no matter how structured the type of remote learning is. Those of us who support a return to in-person learning understand that there will be challenges, possible changes in teachers and schedules, and they need to be flexible for this ever-changing landscape. Every school district that has returned to school has encountered these challenges, including my work district, and we continue to assess daily and work through them with the support and with school personnel and our families. I feel that East Long Meadow should be treated no differently. We all want it in the best interest of our kids, but the reality is that there is no perfect time to return back to school. With January 15th being several weeks past Christmas, this should give us enough time to get through any potential COVID surges and finalize any school modifications that are needed. Here we are about a third of the way through the school year, and with still so much uncertainty about this decision. I urge you to focus on the need for an in-person socialization and the impact on our children's mental health. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope that we, the families of East Long Meadow, are given this option for January 15th.
Great. Mitch, thank you for your time. Appreciate your words tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Okay. Hello, Julie. Julie, if you're there, you're on mute. If you can unmute.
Sorry about that. How many times do teachers have to say that, huh?
Julie, if you could just give us your last name before you start.
Certainly. I'm Julie Sarafini. I'm a mother of three that have gone through the system, but my last one is in middle school. And I will start just by quickly saying that I appreciate everything that the Burchland staff has been doing. I know it's tough for everyone, but the stress on the kids at home is tremendous, and I'm seeing it, and it's affecting his grades, his learning, whereas he's a very good student, and he's, you know, the comments that he's getting back from his teachers are that he's participating well, and he understands the concepts. It's really the logistics that he's struggling with, and my personal struggle is that I have to go back to work. I've been really working out with my office to be as flexible as I can because I don't want him to maintain a whole school day by himself all day. He's just not old enough to do that, but there's no other option, and I do have to, you know, I have to go back to work, so I'm very concerned. I'm just concerned with him being in charge of his day.
Okay, understandable, Julie. And I appreciate your time and your words. Certainly, everyone who gives us input and feedback is valuable, so thank you for chiming in tonight.
Thank you for letting me.
Okay, have a good night. Hi, Katie.
How you doing tonight? Good, thanks. Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to say that I am a parent of four children in three of the schools in town, and I just want to say, kind of reiterate what Kelly had said earlier, what a positive experience my kids have had. Obviously, I would love for my kids to go back to school and get the fullest educational experience possible. Sometimes the status quo might not be heard, but since right now you're asking us to make this decision in a time where the numbers of community spread are at their highest, I feel like it's just counterproductive to try to make that decision and pivot during that time. I feel like remote learning has been so consistent, and my kids have been able to adapt on three different schedules to their school schedule, and the schedule has not wavered. It has been the same every day, no changes, and the expectations are high, and the teachers have not wavered. They have set the bar high and have continued to not lower it. They're busy, they're on task, and they're with teachers all day. I feel like when teachers are, they're fully attentive to the screen right now. They have the kids right there in front of them. I would fear that a change in that and asking a teacher to kind of bounce back and forth would lose both models, really, and to put the teachers and students in a difficult spot. So teachers would be bouncing, kids at school would have to go out on their mask brace with the supervisor. That would leave the kids at home without that interaction and supervision on the screen. That would happen, you know, at least once a period, and then that just stops kind of the continuous learning that's happening. I feel like in terms of equity, everybody has access right now to the same education. There is no transportation issues. Interventions can happen between and among cohorts, and music programs can work safely at home. I feel like screen time isn't going to change. That's the way of the world right now. Every teacher has to prepare their lesson to be remote, so the kids at school will get that same remote lesson in school. I feel everyone is safe at home. Teacher safety has to be considered. Once an in-person model is chosen, teachers have to be all in, and now we're asking them to prepare two kinds of models at the same time. I feel like that's a huge ask. They've already had asks. They've changed their whole curriculum and their whole way of presentation, but they've consistently kept it as rich and rigorous as they can. So I just want to say thank you for not wavering, for making that decision in July and sticking to it, and just kind of thinking about the timeline ahead of us and what, like Kelly said, what the vaccine means, you know, even if it's available to the teachers and the people that need it before we have to change course, if that's a consideration or what. But, you know, I know this is stressful, and I know the decision is going to please and displease many, but I just wanted to kind of put in my two cents, and feel like pushing towards abandoning one solid model for two maybe mediocre models might not be the way to go yet. So just thank you for your time. That's all I have for now.
Okay, Katie, thank you so much for your time, and also thank you for the letter that you sent us, the email last month, and your words tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Hello, Galaxy S9.
Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, so I'm not really prepared. Thank you.
Just your name for the record before you start.
Okay, it's Cassandra Basut.
Okay, Cassandra. Go ahead, please.
So I have two children in two different schools, two completely different experiences. My son's doing great. He's in fourth grade. He's able to handle his schedule. My daughter's in second grade, and I've had to change my job so that I literally sit with her from eight in the morning until three in the afternoon so that I can help her do her work and stay on task, which is fine. You know, that's my job. I wasn't going to get personal. I'm more concerned about the education they're actually getting. I know in October, you guys had talked about reviewing the iReady as a whole and going over it, but it wasn't talked about in November, so I'm just wondering how those test scores actually came out and how the district as a whole is actually doing on them, if that's going to be discussed tonight or not.
We did not have the iReady on the agenda tonight. Gordon, do you have a brief answer to that?
Overall, from a district standpoint, we were certainly a few points down in the cumulative based on what we saw last year, but interestingly enough, our math exceeded our reading in iReady. But it is something that we're digging into so we can get more specifically around the skills that we need to emphasize as we continue on.
Okay, thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Anything else, Cassandra?
No, I was just curious how those scores had come out versus like, you know, first grade, second grade, third grade, you know, if it was showing that the younger kids were having a more difficult time versus the older children, it's all.
Okay, yeah, we'll get more in depth as we go. We get along. Are we going to have an update on that at another meeting, Gordon?
We can certainly put it on the agenda, certainly.
Okay. All right, Cassandra, thank you so much for chiming in tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. I think we have one more hand raised. Hello, Carrie, are you there? Hello, Carrie, are you there? Don, there's a phone in the corner with an X through it. Does that mean something?
It means she's muted.
Oh.
Hi, can you hear me?
Now we can, Carrie, yeah. Thank you so much. Please go ahead.
All right, sure. My name's Carrie Rogers. I am part of the Parents for Partners for in-person learning. My daughter is in fourth grade, and she, while the in-person learning model is absolutely where we want to go, we understand the logistics behind that. However, my question is, for the students that are going into school right now, what has the transmission rate been with the COVID virus?
As far as I know, we have no transmission in the school, correct? Is that correct, Gordon?
We have no transmission that we know of between students. We do have one situation where there may have been transmission within a program, one of the in-person programs. That was staff.
Yep.
Okay, so I do ask for that consideration. I am an occupational therapist who does also teach at the university level, and I do feel that group dynamics, the interaction allows our kids to grow. I'm very thankful that the rec department has done that after-school programming, but I do feel that she is missing the interaction that would occur in school even with social distancing. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, Carrie, thank you so much. I appreciate your time tonight. Mr. Mackey, question for you. I just received a message because Facebook isn't up and running.
Cannot get the stream to work.
Right, but there, people are hitting the max on the, when they're trying to log into the Zoom meeting. Is there a maximum of 100, do you know?
There is a maximum of 100. Yeah, there is.
Okay, so unfortunately, because we can't air it on Facebook, and certainly I know Mr. Mackey has tried several times, this will air later on LCAD on the TV. It will also be available on Facebook to review later. Is that correct, Mr. Mackey?
It will not. If it's not streaming now, it's not going to be recorded on Facebook.
Oh, okay, so it would be available on either LCAD or the LCAD website. Is that correct?
Both.
Okay, thank you. And again, I apologize to those that are trying to log in, unforeseen technical error or issue with Facebook, so we can't stream it, and we are maxed out at 100 on our Zoom meeting. So for any of those out there that are trying to get in, obviously can't hear us, but that is why, and I apologize for that. Okay, if you can bring in the next guest, please. Thank you. Hi, Catherine.
Hi, folks. Hi, my name's Kate Dugan. You've seen me so many times. I really look forward to not coming to your meetings. I apologize. I'm a fourth grader at Michael Shad. I mean, I like coming to your meetings.
You're okay. That's better.
So I, you know, I just want to know that I think it's a really, it's a scary time in the pandemic. It's terrifying to watch the news, and, you know, I look at the maps, and it's a scary time. And so I'm hoping that we can stay remote for a little longer. The current model is going really well. I'm amazed. The sheer hours of instructional time is off the charts, as I can map it. I'm not convinced the hybrid can match the actual time between teachers and students. That's sort of incredible. I also am worried about our teachers. This is, I mean, my daughter's teacher is grading stuff at eight, nine o'clock at night. They always are, but teachers are sort of maxed out, and it seems to me that hybrid is a big ask. I know our teachers could rise to the occasion. I'm fully confident that their capacities, but at some point, it's just a big ask. And then, the last thing is, I do think that there are plenty of families who are struggling. Everything is really terrible. I mean, it's a pandemic, and we're exhausted, but I really, I do think the remote model is working for families, and having the face-to-face meeting time with the teachers and their classmates is really incredible. So kudos to you all for all of this hard work, and we're cheering for you. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Kate. Thank you for checking in tonight.
No, I know. You know what? That happens when I, it jumps down the list.
So. Amy, we'll hear you later. We'll get to you, Amy, in a little bit.
There you go. And I didn't forget, it's done to you.
Is that Laura Peter Rose out there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, it's actually Chris. Sign down with Laura, yes.
Okay, good to see you.
Good. Listen, I guess, I understand it's a scary time. I understand what everybody's saying, but I guess my point of view kind of coincides with Governor Baker and the head of the CDC, in that the children really are better off in school and just as safe in school. And this is not according to me. It's according to the head of the CDC. If we're going to follow the science, I think we should listen to them. The children, it's more, it's not just the education. The social lives are dying. This is their life. I understand that teachers want to be safe. I want to be safe. The kids want to be safe, but teachers are essential workers, like nurses are, like grocery store workers are, and I think we can find ways to do this safely. CDC offers guidelines, and I really think we should follow them and get these kids back to school, like the governor says and like the CDC says.
Okay, Chris, I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you for your words, and certainly we'll take them into consideration. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Mackey?
It's all the hands. There was, we had another person, but just maybe double-check and see if there's anybody who wished to speak earlier who still wishes to speak.
I think Barbara Donahue had her.
Yeah.
At one point.
Most of the time, but.
Is anybody else out there like to speak? This would be our opportunity to do so. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we're going to move along.
Okay.
Thank you, Mackey. Okay, we have a chance for the committee. Any committee or subcommittee communications this evening? Sarah, you're on mute.
No, just a quick note. I had gone to the hot cocoa on the GoGo and just appreciate the efforts that all the different schools are making to ensure that some of those activities that allow kids to convene in appropriate fashions are continuing, and just want to say thank you to the schools for making those opportunities happen.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Anyone else? Okay, we will move forward with our agenda then with a discussion with the East Long Meadow Health and Medical Advisors. So, Mr. Mackey, if.
Yeah, I'm going to ask them if they would all raise their hands so they jump to the top. It'd be easier. Thank you, Dr. Clark.
Mr. Mackey, Ms. Petrowski is not able to get in because of the 100-person limit. Is there a possibility to send her a panelist email?
Yep, it'll take me a second. So, Dr. Clark. So, Dr. Clark, and Kelly LaBombarde.
While we're waiting, just to give everyone an update, some of us did meet with Desi last week in terms of information about the audit that they requested. The teachers' union also met with them. We felt like it was a good meeting, certainly informative for them and for us. And the next step in that process would be a, their final report, which we're expecting within the next week or so. So that's still ongoing, but certainly a collaborative process with the state. We've asked them for their help as much as they're asking for as much information from us as they can get. So just that update while we're waiting.
So Amy has. No, I just, Amy has the link, or I sent it.
Okay. You texting her, Gordon? Okay, thank you.
He's getting on now, I think.
Thank you.
I wish I was a good singer or something. I'd entertain the crowd, but I've got nothing. You're on mute, Beth.
I think of the years we spent begging for computers, document cameras, smart boards, and how just necessary they are in today's days. And it kind of blows my mind to think of how it's all come together. And I think that that's a good thing, too. I guess I could say that in committee communications that our town has supported us with all the things we needed, because it really did help this transition where we weren't running out there trying to get our kids Chromebooks. They already have them, you know? And I don't know, I just, that's what goes through my mind about how important it is to support the schools and the fact that our community does do that. It's a wonderful thing.
That's right. It's a good little town we live in. I agree with you, Beth.
It is, yeah.
Hi, Amy.
Hi, guys. Sorry about that.
No, glad you made it. You got booted out and you couldn't get back in, right?
Yeah, you guys are popular tonight.
I guess. Well, they were waiting to hear your information, so let's segue into that. If you want to start, Amy, if you can give us kind of an update where we're at in terms of the town and statistics and our well-being.
Sure. So I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that our cases are surging. I think we all knew that this was anticipated, especially post-Thanksgiving. I did have some emails today asking kind of where we were in the color metrics. So I will just say that it was expected that this, in last report, we would drop it down, back down to yellow, because the testing sites were closed for so long that our, the number of tests administered were just so much lower. I do anticipate, I mean, it's, it's hard to know with the new metrics where our color will be in the upcoming week, because I don't have any indication of how many tests are administered. So now, in order to be considered a red community, you have to hit up 10 per 100,000 residents, and we're at like 38 per 100,000. So we blow that one out of the water. But, and to figure out the percent of positivity, I have to know exactly how many tests were administered. And I, I just don't know that until the day the results are, are given. So I can't predict with certainty where we'll go, but I can tell you, so we finished November, so I can give you a little recap on that. In October, we had 122 cases. In November, we had 172 cases, three people who passed away from the virus, 31 pediatric cases, 79 in the 20 to 50 range, and 62 in the 51-plus range. We had one long-term care facility case in November. So it was by and large all community-based transmission. So now we're, we're seven days into December, and minus the little kind of dip that we had post-Thanksgiving, we're at about a 10-day, 10 cases a day average. So we've had 70 cases as of right now. I just looked. How those kind of play out is 10 in the pediatric range. So in 10 days, in seven days, we've had 10 pediatric cases. We've had 29 in the 20 to 50 range, and 31 in the 51-plus range for a total of 70. We do have some long-term care cases in there. So let me see, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven of those 70 are in a long-term care facility. So that number is going up, but it's nothing like it was in the spring. And then, so just a little update on testing capacity, because if you remember, in the summer, one of the concerns was the ability to properly contact trace due to delays in being able to get a test and delays in those test results. We are seeing amazing test results in the state-run testing facilities. So if you go to a stop-the-spread site, like the one at the Eastfield Mall, where you're, you might have to wait six hours. So I'm getting feedback that depending on what time of the day you get there, there could be a significant wait. So if you do want to go to the Eastfield Mall, get there when they open, get there before they open. Otherwise, you could be waiting a while. But once you do get tested, those results are back within 24 to 48 hours. I think the average is 27.5 based on my last DPH call. So that, that's, that's amazing. Those are numbers that we want to see. They weren't looking like that. Now, if you go to a private lab, so today I got a case, it was a pediatric patient. They were tested on December 1st, and the results came to me today. So that's a seven-day delay in us being able to do any kind of contact tracing. So that's, that's just the reality, the pros and the pros and the cons of the capacity that we have right now in our area. I know they're turning people away. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask you what time Eastfield opened. You said to get there before it opens. Do you know the time they open?
They, they vary. I would check the stop-the-spread site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I know HDC is the other kind of one, the closest other one to us, and they're, they're turning people away in the afternoon. So if you want to get, if you're trying to go to the HDC site, which is the other main provider in our area, getting there early is, is also key. So that's, that's kind of the, the numbers update. Is there anything, any questions that I can answer for you guys? Or maybe Dr. Clark or Kelly have something to add to that?
Dr. Clark, how are things going in, in your practice? And what are you, what are you experiencing?
I actually think it's still going about the same that it was going about a month ago when we last met. We definitely see an uptick in the number of cases. The pediatric cases are still fairly mild, though there have been a few of them that are more severely affected. They're usually getting better within seven days easily. The concern is they're spread to their elderly grandparents and other people in the community. The testing that I'm seeing done, we send all our testing to Bay State Medical Center. Bay State also has a hotline that you can call, 795. Oh my gosh, 0012, and you can schedule your own test. But for pediatrics, you will always need a referral. So if you're trying to get your child tested, please call their pediatrician, and they can fax it over, and the test will happen. They have one site in the Springfield area that's on Caboose Street, right near Mercy Hospital. Turnaround is, has been consistently 48 hours. You get it within two days. Even if it's the afternoon, it's back two days in the morning. So it's, it's very consistent since they started doing it. And it's pretty, it's run pretty smoothly.
Clark, if I get interrupted, Dr. Clark?
Sure, go ahead.
Can you just repeat that phone number? You just cut out on the number. Was it 775-0012?
It's 795-0012.
And then you said pediatric, not, do non-pediatrics need a referral as well, or just pediatric?
No, no, just pediatric.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I do have to say, though, the AAP, the Academy of Pediatrics, has recommended that kids are better off in school. I've heard some of the, your folks calling in saying that. The CDC recommends, it's, it's not just the CDC, it's the American Academy of Pediatrics. The in-person learning is very important for our kids to proceed. We're seeing a lot of social and emotional backlog from the isolation that the kids are having at home. And I think over the past few months, we've been able to see that those kids that are in school are not transmitting amongst themselves. The spread has been within the community. And so this is not a school prob, well, it is a school problem ultimately, but it is not there that the kids are coming in contact with the disease. It's within their community and within their homes and things that they do outside of school. So I think we're going to be planning for their return as soon as possible.
Dr. Clark, how do you feel on the availability of testing and the re, the time? I know you said 48 hours on that specific one. Are we where we should be in terms of test availability and return of results in terms of effectiveness of testing?
Ideally, I'd like to see it at 24 hours. And I'm sure Amy Petrowski would also like that for contact tracing. But, you know, ultimately, if you are exposed, your testing should not happen immediately. It should happen at least five days out from your exposure. So I think if we get people more educated about that, I think there are enough test, testing spots and test availability out there. I think it's there. I think a lot of people are getting multiple tests and for one exposure because they're not contacting healthcare providers, or they don't know the appropriate timing for the testing to be done. So if you're exposed, you have to wait five to seven days to get tested for it to be anywhere near reliable. The first test, if you do it 24 hours after your exposure, is not going to be, is not going to be.
Can you define the exposure in terms of the CDC definition requirement?
Well, you know, I think it's in-person contact, face-to-face contact for more than 15 minutes. Now, whether we're talking about masks or not, I think we're talking in the school system and what we use in the healthcare profession. Whether you're masked or not, it doesn't matter. We're still going to test you because the risk of spread is so high. But previously, it was face-to-face contact without a mask, but we're still counting, we're still testing you even if you did have a mask on.
And so at 15 minutes, you say, but it's a cumulative 15 minutes within a 24-hour period? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and what about, you just said something else. I can't think of it. Any other questions? Kelly, any information in terms of what's going on in the schools and things that you're seeing?
Yes, last week, we saw a lot of students that were close contacts. The majority were remote, so that did not, you know, pay, pose a great problem. But today, we got two positives. You know, the nurses are doing a great job. The parents are doing a great job. They're actually calling the nurses to report that someone in the household is positive, and then we are able to, you know, of course, the kids in the house are going to be close contacts. So we can, you know, make sure that they stay out and educate. So the parents are doing a great job of letting us know, which is great, because then we can be ahead of this a little bit.
Right.
I would say that if, if, when we do return to school, and whenever it is that you guys decide to make that transition, there, there is, I think, four, four elements that will help that be a successful transition that's important for parents to be aware of. We, we know that community transmission is happening. I was at a Zoom meeting with Dr. Shu from DPH. And one of the things she said is transmission in our community is occurring. But when we, when it comes to schools or daycares, our job is to do our best to eliminate transmission within the school building. And so it is going to come to our door. Our job is to help prevent it from spreading within our door. There's four key ways that I think Esalen Meadow can go about it. One is the most important, and Dr. Clark, jump in at any time, is masking, is making sure that our community within the building is wearing their, their masks at all times it's supposed to, and keeping that six feet of social distancing, especially during times where mask usage is not occurring. So the state has done some research that a lot of the transmission of the teachers within the building happens during break time. So helping our teachers be mindful that when you're on a break or you're eating your lunch and, and you're unmasked, to not be doing that with other people as much as possible. The third part of that is surface cleaning. I found out Friday that 8% of infections, I think, Dr. Clark, you said this, 8% of infections are occurring from surface infections. And finally, and this is really important, and I, I wish there were more than 100 people on this call right now, because it's probably, in my opinion, the most important element to getting our kids back to school, which is practicing safe, doing safe practices within your own family. So thinking about what you're doing outside the building really has an impact on how successful the school committee and the schools are going to be able to be to keep your kids inside the building. Because if, you know, you're in school and everyone's masking and they're keeping six feet away, and then they get out of school and everyone's having playdates and sleepovers, it's going to be really hard for the schools to be successful. So what we're seeing right now is most of the, the spread within our community is happening through family groups, whether it's like playdates or social gatherings or within the confines of a, of a home. But we have seen, one of the, I don't know if I mentioned, I do so many meetings, I'm not sure if I told you guys this in October or November or not, but we've seen really successful close-contact tracing, and especially in, in your teachers, where when they know soon enough and they mask in their home, they're able to prevent the spread to their family members. And that's pretty amazing, that if we do proper contact tracing, which the school is, is doing fantastic job at right now, and we're alerting people that they were exposed by wearing masks in their homes, nobody else in the house is getting sick. So that's a, that's a great message, that, one of the things that I'm having trouble with in, including schools and not including schools, is people are really reluctant to share information about close contacts and share information around exposures, and they want to do their own contact tracing. And that makes it really hard for us to notify people. The, the second piece that, that's making it a little bit challenging, which may impact the schools, is when pediatricians are, are saying, oh, we consider you a positive, or you don't need to get tested if your brother is not sick. And, and we're seeing that a lot, somewhat still that DPH has sent out an advisory. And I've had parents call me and say, my doctor said I'm not supposed to test my son, but I'm positive. Shouldn't I get him tested? That's, that is, it's happening. So if people are interested and their pediatricians are saying, oh, don't worry about it, we'll just assume he's positive, what that does is it doesn't allow us to do contact tracing. We can't then get him in the system and then figure out who he's been in contact to to prevent the spread. And if we get into the school system, that's going to be a critical piece, right? We know there's going to be disruption. We know that there's going to be a change in the system, because it is here, it is in our community. But by proper contact tracing, we can limit the amount of disruption that occurs. And if people are interested in that DPH guidance, they can just Google pediatric adolescent COVID-19 testing guidance. And that came out on November 25th. So if you, if you have a situation where your child is not being offered a test, like, because Dr. Clark said, pediatrics often require referral, you can refer to that guidance and, and help educate your primary care.
I have to also say that if and when, or when we do return to school, it's not just going to be that everybody's back at school. It's going to be a hodgepodge of people coming and going with the contact tracing. People are going to have to come back, come in to pick up children that have been exposed and now need to be quarantined. It's, you know, I listened to one woman, and I feel her pain and that she needs to get back to work, but it's not just going to be that you drop off your kid and they're going back to school. There, it's going to be a moving target all the time, depending on what exposures we have. And, you know, just need to ask in advance for cooperation with that. When nurses call, please try to get there within an hour to get your child, try to get them tested as soon as possible, so that they can return to school as soon as possible.
So what we're asking is that parents have a plan that if they cannot come pick up their child, that they could have somebody in their family to hopefully pick up their child within an hour. The other thing is that the flu vaccines are due by December 31st. So we want to make sure that everybody goes out there and gets their flu shot and either sends it to the school nurse, or you can send it to myself, so that we can get everybody up and compliant.
Yeah, and if you had your child tested at our annual flu clinic and you didn't say. Yeah, and if you had your child tested at our annual flu clinic and you didn't save that paperwork, you can call me at the health department, I can help you get instructions. But the big Y in Springfield has held on to documentation of that. If you want to contact them, they can get you that. We've gotten, I've gotten a call from a lot of parents saying, oh, I got to get this in. So that's where you can get that information.
Dr. Clark, I remember my my other question, we we were talking about exposure and testing. If if a student or staff member has an exposure and goes to have a test, then they should isolate until they have or quarantine, I should say, until they have the test results. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is correct.
And Amy, do we believe we have the resources to contact trace effectively if we're in school with more students?
One of the things that's worked really great with the with the school-based transmissions and cases that we've already had is the school nurses making that contact. It's really helped parents feel more comfortable than if it's me or the CCC calling. So I would imagine if we're into a hybrid model, Kelly and I would work closely with the school nurses and continue that process because really getting that information is out as fast as possible is going to help limit that spread. And I I think they're doing a fantastic job so far, so I can't imagine that would change.
And Kelly, what about personal protective equipment? Are we, we in good shape if we have staff, more staff in the building? Will there be training involved?
Definitely.
Have everything that that yeah, will require?
Gordon and I and Joanne Welch, we all went, we went to all the schools and we did a video, like a PowerPoint. We went over all the PPE, when to use it. We actually have, we put some of our CNAs in buildings to help with that. I think we have, you know, what we need. And I think it really works because when you look at our close contacts, I don't think any of them were positive. So we're, we're doing the right thing, we're wearing what we should, we're washing our hands. But we are going to have to educate the rest of the staff that haven't been in the building. And the other thing that's really important is that families need to check their children every single day to see if they have any symptoms at all. And if they do, they need to stay home and the staff need to do the same thing so that we can, you know, hopefully try to get ahead of this. If everybody is is checking their kids every day and every staff member is checking themselves every day, if you're sick, stay home.
Kelly, what's what symptoms are they? What are the specific symptoms?
I'm sorry, I didn't get a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. Kelly, I was just wondering the specific symptoms that parents and families should be looking, looking for.
It used to be a temperature of 100.4, now it's 100 degrees or more. It can be a cough, a sore throat. You know, what's more more serious is like the shortness of breath and the respiratory. So, you know.
Diarrhea as well.
Yep, it could be diarrhea, it could be stomach ache. And and we don't want to say, oh, well, it's just a stomach ache. Now, when when people call in sick, we need to set, you know, we used to not ask them, but now it's like, okay, is this, you know, is this, is this for a doctor's appointment or is this because you're having symptoms? Because really, anybody needs to go see their doctor or get tested in order to come back if they have symptoms.
So that's what we're recommending. If anyone is showing any of those symptoms, they should contact their doctor potentially and or get a test and wait for the results of that test before returning.
And notify the school so that we know.
And that include? That they've been, that they're going for a test, you mean, and that they've contacted their doctors?
You know, like, I use the example of allergies. Okay, my voice is not very good right now, but I have allergies. But I've had a test, I know that I'm negative, so it's my allergies. You know, is this something, you have symptoms that you get every single year at this time of, you know, this time of year? You go to your doctor and he's probably going to, he may say it's your asthma or whatever. But at least, you know, we need to see that somebody saw the staff person or the child before they come back. You know, and bring a note saying that they're safe to return or that they, you know, are getting a test.
So to that point, are we going to require a note if a student is absent for a sickness? Or if potentially it is some other asthma attack or something, then maybe we wouldn't require a note? How are we going to handle that logistically?
Yeah, we would still require a note.
Okay.
Yes.
Just this year because of COVID specifically, where we'd be asking?
I mean, we did it in the past for three days, but but this is a total different situation.
Okay. And until we reach vaccination, it will be cool, continue to ask for that? I mean, when do we stop asking for that, I guess? We don't know. Yeah.
I don't know.
That's fair, because we don't know. Amy, did you have something else you were going to, you were going to jump in there?
I had heard the from a pediatrician at Boston Children's that the number, and I was going to confirm this with Dr. Clark, and I think it's important for parents if it is accurate. The number one symptom for pediatric patients is a runny nose.
Okay.
Is that, would you agree with that?
Well, it is probably up there, but I think the runny nose doesn't get it completely. So they have to have runny nose in conjunction with something else, like a sore throat or a cough, especially if they have a history of allergies and stuff like that. So it's it's an art, it's figure out which kid is actually sick. And I think most of us are erring on the safety part, just get them tested, especially if they're in school. If the remote kids, you know, if they have a history of allergies and they have a runny nose, I'm not really chasing them. But those kids who are in-person schooled, they get tested anyway.
Is there a cost to the test? I pardon my.
Well, it depends on where you go because some people are getting. It is, if you go to a stop the spread site or one of the state-sponsored sites, or you have a doctor's order for the test, your insurance company will cover that and the state covers it if you go to a stop the spread site. But if you go to like a Med Express or a CBS, those are $150 a test. So and then you're waiting, you're waiting two days for the appointment and then you're waiting five days for the lab, lab work. If you sit in the line, get the test for free, get it in two days. I mean, it's the stop the spread sites are really the way to go.
You grab a coffee and you go in at about 7:00 AM, put some good tunes on, it's a fun time.
The other thing about the Med Express sites is that they are frequently not doing, they'll do the rapid test in addition to the PCR test. We still have to wait for the PCR result. We can't use.
And you get charged twice.
Okay. Good to know. Do I have any other questions from the committee? Okay, as we move forward, we certainly are very appreciative of all your input and we will certainly lean on you as we continue with more plans. So thank you all very much for your time this evening and we will look forward to speaking with you again soon. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Yeah, same to you. Thank you. Okay, always informative from that group. And I just want to let the general public know that we meet with them more than just on this me, meeting because we do rely on them for their expertise in the in the health field. And we all continue to learn as we move forward. So certainly thankful for their time and their knowledge.
And Mr. Thompson, to Ms. Petrowski's point, we're communicating almost every day, seven days a week. She will contact us with any new school community cases or close contacts over the weekend whenever it happens.
Right. And that'll be the key moving forward is that we continue that line of communication and that we contact traces efficiently as we possibly can so that we can ensure we're doing as much as we can to to stop the spread. So. Okay, anything else on that, that subject? Everybody's good. All right, we're going to move forward with an update of the ELPS continued planning on the instructional models.
Okay.
Hands up, can they put their hands up, please?
Sure. We have our leadership team in the audience, they're putting their hands up now. And Mr. Mackey will bring them in. And certainly if they're, as we go through this presentation, if there are questions that are specific to a school, please, you know, stop us and let's ask. And Mr. Mackey, would you grant Ms. Brown the ability to share her screen?
Yes, I did that already for the meeting.
Thank you. We have everybody, we're still working.
Oh, but don't need, don't share yet, Heather, because I have to get everybody in first, sorry. They won't be happy.
Right. Just as we're waiting for the leadership team to join us, just a reminder for folks out there, we apologize that the Facebook feed is not working. Mr. Mackey has informed us of that and that we have a limit of 100 on the Zoom video tonight. Nowhere near, not intentional at all, but certainly apologize for the lack of access. But this video will be available on the LCAT website and the LCAT channel.
I think that's it.
And I think we're pretty close to there. Miss Amy, okay, hello, leadership team, thanks for coming tonight.
I do want to just let you know that Mrs. Dakin was going to be here due to a family emergency. She asked that with you.
Okay, thank you, Renee, for letting us know. All right, Mr. Smith, if you want to take it away.
Okay, so just a lot of the points I've been touched on, so we'll try to take it into a little bit more depth. But just to give you an idea of where we've been with the planning and where we hope to go. The first thing, we had a few parents touch on, if we can move to the second slide. Thank you. Obviously, we started the year predominantly remote for most of our students. We feel, especially with the professional development that we were able to put in place before the school year began and and really for the incredible staff that we have, we feel that it's a, it's a robust remote program. And we said this to the seven-person panel who interviewed us for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the audit that Mr. Thompson referred to earlier. You know, we would put it up against any remote program across the Commonwealth. We think our staffs do an exceptional job. We also think our families are partnering incredibly with us, you know, and it does take a village. But what was surprising for that seven-person panel to understand, so I do find it interesting, given the amount of documentation we've sent to them, that they didn't know this point before, but is the amount of synchronous learning that's going on throughout the day, that we are capturing the original school schedule, no matter what school your child's at. And throughout the day, there is synchronous learning. You hear a lot in the news about asynchronous learning and assignments and children not being connected with. But that's not the case with our program. We're connecting with them throughout the day, with teachers, with other staff members, and hopefully keeping all students engaged. We do understand the challenges that people are facing and by no means do I diminish those challenges. We're just saying that this remote program seems to be having success. And I don't think there's anyone in the ELPS community who is not looking forward to returning students to school safely. And that's what we're trying to do. But just to give you an idea of some of the things we're seeing in this model, at the end of October, we reported that we had roughly 98.5% attendance averaging across the district. We dipped a little bit to 98.3, that's still exceptional. And you see the attendance rates at the bottom there in the parentheses, Meadowbrook at 97.6%, Maple Shade at 98.7%, Mountain View at 98.6%, Burchland at 98% and ELHS at 98.5%. These are percentages that are higher than sometimes we see when we're in an in-person, full-in-person instructional situation. So, you know, again, I want to thank the families for their incredible work and for our staff because that that's exceptional as we have now entered December. One of the things that's important for all families to know is that no matter what our transition ends up being, as we expand in-person learning possibly in January, all families, all students will have the option to remain in a remote instructional model. So that's something that we will continue to offer and we're working now to make sure that that continues to be a robust program for folks who and students who choose that. One of the things that we also want to reiterate is that day one of the school year, which was September 16th, we had students and staff in our buildings. Mrs. LaBumbard had mentioned that we were, Dr. Welsh, Mrs. LaBumbard and me had gone around, meeting with staff before the first day of school, talking to in-person staff, teaching them how to use the protective, the personal protective equipment. But more importantly, just going through sort of what our daily operations will look like and do look like now. And that's something that we're going to continue to do as we prepare for this transition. We had 106 students start with us on that as we started school. And now we're slowly expanding to 100, we're at 164 students coming for in-person instruction. And most of this expansion is coming from the work of our building multi-tiered support system teams. It's simply put, those are our students assist, student assistance teams. And we're trying to really dig in beyond just, you know, how a student looks in terms of engagement, but looking for signs of potential social and emotional challenges and situations where in-person contact is going to be helpful in support that individual student. One of, one of the things that also is mentioned, just as Ms. Petrowski was going through everything that the health department does, is COVID-19 reporting, and she said this, so I won't belabor it, but we work incredibly closely with the Department of Public Health. And I can't say enough about Ms. LaBumbard, our nurse leader, and all of our building nurses because I know that Ms. Petrowski said it, but it bears repeating. They have been so crucial to contact tracing quickly and helping stop the spread of this virus to others when we get a positive case. They've been incredible. And often, we or buildings are first to contact the family once we've been told by the Department of Public Health right here in East Long Meadow. And there is a connection there. And so that, I believe, does go a long way. And I think Ms. Petrowski said that in her comments as we were discussing with all of them. Just some current numbers. So we're at a positivity rate in Hampden County at 7.1%. And I believe we have surpassed all other counties. We used to be behind Bristol County in the positivity rate. But I think in this last snapshot that came out last Thursday, Hampden County went to the number one county as with positivity rate. Within the community in the past 14 days, I think Ms. Petrowski was talking, speaking to this, we had 78 positive cases. How has ELPS been impacted? Well, number change that Mrs. LaBumbard just mentioned a few minutes ago. So when I put these slides together, we have, we have had since September 16th, 35 positive cases, whether they be staff or students, that increased today to 37. And with that, we've had approximately 103 close contacts. And so we've been working, as I said, closely with the Department of Public Health. We've been working closely in each building with our health office. And our administrators get involved as well in terms of contacting families and connecting and making sure that we're supporting. Because that's probably the most important piece to all of this is providing that support, that reinsurance, and having someone contact the family whom they trust and know. Even with that amount, whether it be the East Long Meadow numbers as a whole or ELPS numbers since September 16th, one of the things that the remote learning model has provided is that we've had relatively little disruption to teaching and learning in September, October and November. And that was a key point that we also brought up to the panel, seven-person panel from DESI the other day when we were interviewed for the audit. And the audit, just for general knowledge, was around programming and instructional models. It was not something that generally when people think of an audit, they're looking at budget and budget numbers and so forth. But it was more about what are we doing with our instructional models and how are we supporting our students? One of the biggest things that other districts and other buildings are seeing, we're not seeing right now as much, is that staffing becomes a challenge. As you start to contact trace and begin to quarantine, staffing will become a challenge. The challenge that we're seeing is that currently we're experiencing a drought in daily on-call substitutes, and we're looking for creative ways of hopefully bringing on new daily on-call substitutes, but right now, we have roughly 11 people working in the district on call, has on-call substitutes, daily on-call substitutes, which is a far cry from where we were at this point last year. We can move to the next slide. And so moving from sort of the reporting, that brings us into the planning that we've been doing and what's been going on as we continue to move towards some type of a decision next week on Tuesday, the 15th. Obviously, the priority through all our planning groups remains on how do we keep first and foremost, everybody in the ELPS community as safe as possible? That's, that's our primary focus, and then we move into other steps and elements that we need to include in planning. And so one of the things that obviously people know, given that we have 164 students working in our buildings and well over 120 staff members on a daily basis, we have processes in place. We have things that we have put together in our planning that were in place in August and ready to go. We're utilizing, obviously, our daily cleaning and disinfecting processes at the buildings. Right now, we're not dealing with as large of an in-person population as we might have if we make a transition to expand this. But our custodians have the supplies and they have the knowledge of how to use the disinfectants. And one of the things that we talked about in the training throughout the summer was the difference between cleaning, which is moving away dirt and grime and making something look better, and disinfecting. We need to be doing both. Disinfecting is when you're actually using a product to kill the virus and prevent any kind of surface spread, which I think Ms. La Bombard put at about 8%. So that's another thing that as we've gone through, we've learned that there's not as much surface transmission as we originally feared back in August. It's, I've heard, actually, anyway, tonight was 8%, but I've heard 6%, so we'll try to nail down the percentage before we continue presenting and answering questions on that specific element. The other thing that we've done, and I know this is something that is on people's minds, is we've always partnered with our Department of Public Works regarding the maintenance of our buildings, but probably more importantly, the preventative maintenance of our buildings. And so we've had existing protocols and processes that we go through every year, one of which is looking at all our unit ventilators in the classrooms. Those are the, the machines that are against the wall of windows that's pulling in the fresh air and circulating air throughout the building, and then our exhaust fans take the air out of the building and they're on the roof. And we've always had a maintenance plan, a preventative maintenance plan, that we follow every summer and throughout any given school year. This year, we knew that we needed to make sure we were doing it better and more than we've ever done before, and our custodians definitely stepped up to that challenge and worked with our Department of Public Works to make sure that every unit ventilator in the system was checked, to make sure that we, this was back in August, in late August, as we prepared to open school, to make sure that filters have been changed, everything had been cleaned, and that we were pulling in the most fresh air that we could within all of our classrooms and buildings. And then we did a test at each building around the unit ventilators and the exhaust fan, the whole HVAC, to make sure that that system for that building was working up to the capacity that it should. So we were prepared, as we came out of August 4th, a possible larger group in person. Additionally, we've now begun to work with a local engineering firm to look at our plan, look at our preventative maintenance, make sure that what we feel is a very robust preventative maintenance plan is something that they would also concur with and provide us additional recommendations regarding anything that we can do better. One of the things that we've already started to act upon is that generally we're, we had a cycle of replacing filters throughout any building, at least three times a year. We're doubling that. So we're prepared to do that and make sure that we're replacing filters close to six times a year. And this engineering firm's going to be in our classrooms within the next two weeks and provide us additional recommendations, but also see if they concur with where we see the, the system is in terms of its capacity. But the, the key is obviously bringing in as much fresh air as possible, not necessarily as people have seen in different discussions or heard in different discussions, making a classroom uninhabitable by freezing people out, but just making sure that you're balancing that and you're bringing the fresh air in, and your exhaust fans are pulling the air through the building and making sure air is coming in, and there's a constant cycle. And that's what our custodians and DPW does for us on a daily and weekly basis, but this engineering firm will certainly help with that process. So I wanted people to be aware of that. As we, and I said this on the previous slide, as we transition and start to make this decision, families still are going to have that option to remain fully remote, and this is a key piece, and then connect with their classes still daily via live streaming. And so live streaming is a little different than our remote instructional program. Live streaming is where you do have to manage a few things. We're still running the same lesson plan for the group that may be in front of us, as well as the group who on that given day is remote. And we want to make sure that we're providing them the same access to materials. And so one of the things that we're looking at, and we're really thankful to our IT department and Mr. Mackey's LCAT department, is utilizing equipment that's going to support and make it easier for our staff to provide not only the in-person instruction, but also provide a live streaming situation for, for students at home, and make sure that that's as easy and smooth as it possibly can be. One of the things that we certainly have done is we've had outreach to local districts around us who are doing this. We've started to put together a list of best practices. We've had our own teachers who have helped us, started to look at how they would do this in their classroom. They've started to experiment with some equipment that we have, but we've made now, we've put in orders for purchasing to make sure that all classrooms are supported in doing this. And so we, we owe a huge debt of gratitude to not only the IT department and LCAT, but our teachers who are helping us with this so that we can make as smooth a transition as possible. One of the things as we continue with all these groups and planning that we know is that, and I think Ms. Petrowski or Dr. Clark said this, is that there're going to be disruptions. When you increase in-person learning, there're going to be disruptions within a school community. And so we just need parents to, and families to be aware of that. And that's where the contact tracing comes in. That's where the communication with the school's going to happen. And that's something that we've done, and we certainly will make sure that we're doing and ready to do as we enter into January. Staffing, we talked about a little bit, but it's going to, when you start quarantining staff, that is where you start to run into large challenges. And that probably is where buildings and districts around us have had to close more so than, say, the transmission that's going on. It's how far those close contacts go and how many people will have to quarantine. And so that's an ongoing challenge that we're looking at, and we're hopefully coming up with some creative ideas as to how we can create more potential substitutes and help with supervision in our schools. Transportation also is going to be a challenge, and I know that many, many families had comments on the recent questionnaire that we sent out about transportation. And the unfortunate thing right now is that with the safety protocols that we must follow, and when we agree with them, that in order to keep everybody safe on our school buses, we really can only offer transportation to those students whom we are legally bound to transport. So you're, you're talking about students in grades pre-K through six who are two miles or more away from their school where they're being educated. And that's something we're, we're working on, and hopefully we'll get more information as we enter into the new year. I'm sure that everyone is waiting to get out of 2020 and into 2021, and hopefully that brings some new information and some new ways that we might be able to support families. I had talked a little bit, as we were talking about transportation, about the questionnaire. We wanted to provide some preliminary results this evening. The unfortunate thing is we did not receive information from all of our families. And so right here, what you're seeing is a chart of the percentage of responses. The highest response we received was from the Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook community, excuse me, 78%. That's in your far-right column. Mountain View had 72%, Maple Shade at 73%, Birchland at 63%, and the high school at 61%. So our buildings are starting to dig into this information and contact families so that we can be sure we know what their choice is should we be moving into expanding more in-person learning. As you can see in terms of the responses, if you look at, say, the high school and you're going across, you're looking at about 495 responses, 282 whom, here it says hybrid cohort, but the question had indicated, are you interested in enrolling your student in an in-person model? And then in parentheses, it talked about whether that's, the numbers really are going to dictate whether that's a hybrid or whether that's full in-person. So at the high school right now, we have 282 students responding or families responding, that they would be interested in that if we expand to such a, a model in January. We have about 193 students who right now are saying they're going to remain fully remote. And then we have students in our building, obviously, on a daily basis. We've talked about that throughout the, the different slides we're presenting here. And so we wanted to make sure that families knew that programming is still going to continue on a daily basis. As you go through here, you see that 373 responses at Birchland, 230 would be interested in that expanded in-person, and 132 who are fully remote or deciding that they would like to stay fully remote, and 11 already in some in-person programming. Maple Shade had 200 responses. Of those responses, 113 were interested in some type of expanded in-person, whether it be hybrid or full in-person, and fully remote selection for Maple Shade. We had 78 families indicate that, at least for that student, that they were interested in staying fully remote, with nine in identified, already identified program with daily in-person services. And Mountain View, we had 202 responses with 150 interested in that in-person hybrid or full in-person instruction, and 106 right now who are opting to stay fully remote, with 20 in that district-identified daily programs. Meadowbrook had 361 responses with 235 of those responding indicating that they were looking to be in some type of in-person, be it hybrid or full in-person. 106 staying fully remote and 20 in a currently identified daily program. So as I said, our schools are starting to go through this, and they are contacting families. If families did not answer all the questions, we would not have received the results. Because I know that as schools started to contact people, there has been some confusion and that families have said, oh, I've already answered this survey. But yeah, I believe that you had to go all the way through the required questions in order for it to register on our results. But we will continue to check that out. So I appreciate the few folks that sent emails asking, you know, I did, did reply. This was my reply, and certainly we will add that information to what we have. So this week, our schools will continue to go through this. We will work through all the comments. We're going to be sharing comments that people placed into the questionnaire with our school committee members to make sure that they're as informed as they can be as we move into that Tuesday, December 15th day and, and meeting where we look to make some type of decision around all of this. If you can go to that, that last slide or second-to-last slide. Just to review, at the last school committee meeting, we talked about somewhat of a revised hybrid instructional model. And basically, what the revision was, is that instead of two days on a Wednesday of full remote and then two days on for the second cohort, this hybrid model is looking at a situation where a cohort comes in, has a full week of in-person instruction, followed then by a week of remote instruction and connecting through live streaming as the students who are in a fully remote option would also be doing. Then obviously it flip-flops and Cohort B comes in for that week of in-person instruction. Cohort A is now connecting via live streaming. The advantage we're seeing in this is that there's a little bit more consistency. Over two weeks, you're getting at least five days of in-person learning as opposed to four in the previous model. But it also helps with certain other pieces to our scheduling in terms of elementary schools trying to provide specials more equitably for all their students. And to the point that our health and medical advisory group was making, it helps us manage the contact tracing better. And again, I keep saying this because I want to make sure that we're clear. If a family or a student is interested in staying fully remote, they have that option, and we're working, as we've said throughout this presentation, to make sure that we're supporting that live streaming in the best way possible. So what would a full in-person instructional model look like? Well, one of the key elements to this is that we have the number needed of students opting to remain fully remote so that you have a reduced group that would be seeking some type of in-person instructional model. Should that happen, as we continue to go through questionnaires and contact families, then, you know, there's that possibility of daily in-person instruction, five days a week, every week. So basically, the students who have chosen to participate in an in-person instructional model, hybrid or full in-person, answered that way in the questionnaire. If we are able to make this happen, and that's a big if, because we're still looking at how this spreads out across the district, not everything, even if you're looking at, say, 30% opting out, that's not necessarily evenly spread across each grade level at a given school. So there's some things that we have to work through with that. But if students who have chosen that option and, and the numbers come back where we may be able to make this happen, then that group is coming here on an everyday basis and reporting to their classes. And again, students who have chosen to remain fully remote, they have that option, and they'll be connecting via live streaming. I believe that's the last slide, and so certainly we have the full leadership team here, and we're open to answering any questions that people may have. I think I got through that entire presentation without tapping my papers as I shuffled them. So hopefully that didn't disrupt anyone as that came across the microphone as it did last meeting. I really was just using that as a way to keep the leadership team members awake, and I think I hit my goal.
That's right. Good work, Goran. Thank you.
That's right. Good work, Gordon. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or comments from the committee? Okay, as we continue to work on our plans, we will continue to gather information so that we're fully informed. We do have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, the 15th, at which point we will discuss again. And we're hopeful that the leadership can participate in that discussion and.
Mr. Thompson, I just wanted to mention one more thing before we allow them to escape back into the audience. Without this group on screen, none of this would have been possible. They've been exceptional and they've been exceptional in uncertain times. None of us know exactly what's going to take place the next day or what we might get involved with. And this group is top-notch. They're one of the best, the best leadership team I've ever worked with. So you know, I just want to give them that public thank you because without them, you wouldn't have the model that we have in place and you wouldn't have any of the information really, because this morning we kicked it out to them. And I know they're struggling with it and we've hit them with a challenge, challenging situation this week. And unfortunately, that's not unusual as we continue to go through this pandemic. Many challenges pop up, but this group has always risen to take it on. And so I just want to thank them publicly. And I don't know if there, if I had any cutoff, any points that they may have made. I don't know, Mr. Thompson, if it's okay to open it up just in case there are points that they want to just mention.
Sure. Anyone from the leadership team?
Hi, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. First, I'd like to say that I'm really proud of my staff and students. I spend a lot of time in the classrooms and they're just doing an amazing job and I want everyone to know that. I just want to reiterate something that I told you, Greg, and I think Bill, when you were in the school visiting a while ago, that my concern right now moving into the either one of these models would be staffing. And I know that parents have mentioned it and Gordon mentioned it. I do have a significant number, I think, of staff who either because of their own health or someone who lives in their home will not be able to work if we're in-person. And as Gordon mentioned, we have, I have no subs at Mountain View currently. Not that I particularly need them right now, but I'm really concerned about the amount of staff that I would have to replace if we were in either model and the impact that would have on the kids, because even though we're remote, I think the teachers have really used the professional development they received in the first 10 days that we had to build a really great community, even though it's online. And I just want it out there that I, it's, it's a big concern for me.
And we are working as we, as we think about that challenge, we're working to be as creative as possible. And I know Mrs. Santinello is as well, but it's a challenge. You know, that's, we're at the lowest point in terms of the amount of substitutes working across the district. So that's, that continues to be a challenge.
Right. And many challenges ahead for certain.
I just think it's a challenge to echo Elaine, it's just a challenge we're going to need understanding with. That's all is if we do come back. I mean, I subbed a class today. So I was in five different class sessions online today and that's fine. But the point is just, it's going to get, it's going to look different a lot. And so we're just going to need understanding from families, from community, from everybody. If we do come back in, that, that's, that's going to be sort of the way of the world, not the, not the abnormal.
Right.
Yeah, I think we're all facing that, that very similar challenge. So I would jump right on board with what both Tim and Elaine have said. I know Superintendent Smith shared out during his presentation that we have about 11 subs to cover the whole district. Just to put that in perspective, we had seven staff members at our school out today. And that's pretty low considering what we might face if we were in-person when we're encouraging folks to not come in and to do the right thing and stay home if they're feeling symptomatic. I think a lot of our teachers work through a lot of those symptoms. They do it on a regular basis when they're in school, but they're doing it even more so at home. So to know that if we were in-person, seven of those 11 people would have been, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking very clearly, seven staff members out with only 11 subs across the entire district. And beyond the sub situation, I'm not sure about the other schools, but we have open positions that we have yet to fill, which will become an additional challenge, positions that we're just not getting applicants for right now. And as Elaine was stating, if, if some of our staff members opt not to return for personal reasons, that number is only going to grow.
Without giving a lot of specific examples, I think if you look at the communities around us and their need to change course in the middle of their seemingly well-executed plan, one of the reasons for that was the fact that they didn't have the staff to run their programs. Obviously, the, the impact of sickness is important and first and foremost. But truly, one of the reasons why many of the districts around us have had to change course was that they didn't have the staff.
Okay. No, we understand that concern and hopefully collectively, we can continue to work together. We have another topic on the discussion for this evening regarding subs and hopefully that'll help. But we know that that's going to certainly be a hurdle as we move forward and certainly appreciate your information. Yeah, Frank, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just a quick chime in and a plug for any of our parents out there who, you know, this is a community and, you know, we're, we're looking for help from you guys. So if anybody wants to jump on that sub list, we're more than happy to, to add you in and get you involved in the process and, you know, make this work as a town. So.
And in order to do that, Mr. Page, the parents should contact principals directly. Is that, is that the best way to go about that?
Yeah, so our, our sub postings are always on School Spring. I think I'd have to reopen the one that we had running throughout the course of the fall. But anybody interested, don't hesitate to reach out and we'll get you on the list.
Okay.
And Mr. Thompson, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but to sort of piggyback on what Mr. Page just stated, but in a, in a sort of different topic in regards to speaking to parents and reaching out to parents, regardless of whatever the vote is, regardless of what the future is for East Long Meadow Public Schools, whether we are remote, whether we are hybrid or in-person, I think that it's important, parents, if your child is struggling, it's, it's no different than if we had a struggling student while we were in-person. Please reach out to let us know because there isn't an administrator in this Zoom meeting right now. There isn't a guidance counselor listening, teaching online right now that doesn't want to help your child. So please let, and we will be able to work with you to, to reach some sort of solution to help your child through this time right now that is not contingent on a school committee vote. We are here, we have the skill set, we have the empathy, we have the desire to help your children get through this incredibly trying and strange time. So please, please, please let us know.
Great points. Thank you, Mr. Merton, for, for saying those things.
I can just add in one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
At the high school, for those of you, for the parents who haven't made your decision yet, don't hesitate to give us a call. We're happy to talk with you. Answer any questions you might have that would help you make the best decision for your family. So give us a call. We're at school and we're here just waiting to answer your questions. Don't hesitate.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Excellent point. Okay. Anything else for our leadership today, leadership team? Just wanted to certainly acknowledge all the work that you've all done and continue to do. Also wanted to acknowledge the passing of one of our former leadership team members, Judy Fletcher. I have fond memories of Ms. Fletcher, specifically at Memorial School when we had to move Maple Shade over with her sleeves pulled up, scrubbing the office for Ms. Fool, getting ready to move our, our students over. So she exemplified East Long Meadow and the leadership team and certainly was a, a great member of this community and will be missed. So just wanted to acknowledge her passing and I offer condolences to all of you that have worked for her for so many, worked with her for so many years. Okay, with that, thank you so very much to all of you for joining us this evening. We look forward, if you're able to join us next Tuesday. I see Beth's got a question before we leave. Beth, you have some? Oh, just waiting. Okay, thanks. All right. So again, thank you all for your information this evening and for your continued efforts and we'll see you all in a week.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody. Okay. Good discussion on that topic. And as I said, we do have a scheduled meeting for next week. That'll be the 15th of December, 6 o'clock for more on that discussion. All right, moving right along, we have, is this the grant? So we're going to bypass Ms. Blair, the grant for now, and we'll wait for further information on a future meeting, correct?
Correct. So if we could bump it to the next meeting for approval. Thank you.
Excellent. So no action on 5.2.1 this evening. We will now move forward with the draft calendar for 2021, 2022 for possible start and end dates and vacation days.
So in your packet, we have a calendar that, following sort of our more traditional school year schedule, and let's hope that 2021 brings us back to some normalcy. So it has, if you look at August, it's bringing new staff in on the 27th, having that orientation day, the convocation day on August, Monday, August 30th, and then starting with students on August 31st. You can see as you go through the vacations where they've been placed, pretty much they're placed in the, in the same place year after year. You know, obviously Thanksgiving, the holiday break, February usually falls with that, President's Day, Monday, and April vacation usually captures Patriots' Day within it. So then going through the full 180 days, we would be looking at a possible end date around June 10th. We do know that this is all subject to change and so certainly want our, our parents aware of that because as we work with the different groups, leadership team, ELEA, there may be things that we're adding in, such as we have to look at our professional development days and so forth. And, you know, that could bump the end of the school year by a day here and there. And so this really is the, to start the discussion and just give people an idea of where we hope to begin the school year and where then that would end the school year.
Okay, questions on the calendar? Do we need a motion to approve this tonight or are we just kind of putting it out there, Gordon?
If you, I guess the motion could be just to approve a draft that we would be at least able to publish saying that it's a draft. So families have an idea of where school may begin and when school may get out.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead, Sarah.
Do we have to vote on that tonight though? Because I mean, as we think about some of the uncertainties regarding professional development and, and the half-day structure, like, I'm not sure.
I think Sarah, we're just talking about the start date and the end date and the vacations right now. That's the draft part of it.
But the other pieces, pieces are on this. I think that's my concern. Half-days, professional development days are marked off on this calendar as it stands. So to put that there, I think is also a victory for saying.
I think the half-days right now are not the parent conference days, nor are they professional development days. It's the half-day before Thanksgiving and there's one half-day before the holiday break. I think, I could be wrong, but I think those are the ones that we included. But to, to your point, certainly that we, we will be discussing professional development. So most likely what that will do is maybe bump the end date out a day or two, depending on how we're placing those.
So perhaps we could approve a start date for this evening and the scheduled vacation days? If we just go that far, since we don't know the end date yet?
Sure.
Okay. Is that all right, Sarah?
Is that a start day for staff or a start day for students or both? Because again, if professional development isn't rolled into this and, and additional professional development days are at its beginning of the year, wouldn't we, or couldn't we foreseeably be changing the start date for students? Or am I not understanding what the conversations are to come?
No, I mean, depending on what's negotiated with the ELEA, that could change. I think that those days usually, I think what you're referring to is something, you know, adding to the beginning of the year before with students. So the earliest we would be with students would be the 31st.
Okay.
Or see pushing that date back, the 31st, right? We won't go into September. Historically, we haven't because it gets late in June if we do.
Correct. We try to start before the Labor Day holiday and we usually have our convocation day on that Monday and then have students return after that.
Right. Beth, did you have something?
Yeah, so there'd be three professional days that would get fit into this at some point.
Right now, we, there's an agreement on, in the current contract, two additional professional development, full professional development days after convocation. So you have your convocation day on the 30th. And then historically, we've had a full professional development day on the election day in November. And then we try to schedule one in February, March, in that timeframe.
Okay.
The three total right now that are agreed upon. But certainly as we discuss half-days and different scenarios with the East Long Meadow Education Association, you know, whatever we agree on for a future contract would then possibly bump out the end dates.
Any comments or questions on the calendar? So if we're okay with the start day, we can approve that and we could approve the vacations and holidays as those aren't anticipated to change. And of course, this is a draft, so anything could happen, but potentially give families a chance to plan as we move forward.
Okay, I moved to accept the 2021, 2022 draft for the East Long Meadow Public Schools showing the first day of school for students along with vacation days.
Okay.
And it's subject to change, the, for person, professional development days.
Yeah, I don't think our start.
Okay, then scratch the last part.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
Does that make sense, Kathy? Yep, okay. Do I have a second on that motion from Beth?
I'll second.
Second by Bill. Discussion. Hearing not all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, and that carries five to zero. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, as we mentioned before, we have a special school committee meeting not scheduled prior to this, but we have scheduled a meeting for December 15th. That's next Tuesday and that will be at 6:00 PM. And that's about all we have on that subject. Gordon, anything else on that?
No, that, we're going to work this week to try to get you as much information around each school's community and the decision they're making regarding the transition to expanded in-person learning. And so I'm sure there will be a robust discussion next Tuesday.
Could we possibly, and I'm just saying this out of an abundance of caution, could we possibly make an emergency meeting just if we have all kinds of questions and there's concerns and there's things like that for like that Wednesday? Hopefully we don't need it, but I just feel like then if we, oh, then we gotta think about this and oh, now we've got this. And I think we're going to have all our ducks in a row, but just think about it before we can't make that meeting. If possibly we want to think about that, just in case something comes up and we really need to look into it. Because I know people want a response next week. So just a thought.
Yeah, we could probably schedule something and then cancel it if not needed. Yeah, we could probably schedule something and then cancel it if not needed. I would prefer that we try to make a decision on that day so that we don't prolong it. But I, I see your point that if we're not able to, for whatever reason, we could have that option.
And if we have alternate accounts within the system that we could consider using so that we're not limiting participants in the event that something does go wrong with Facebook, as we saw tonight, I don't know if there's accounts that hold more than 100 participants within.
I can check into that, Sarah. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think there is a limit, the way it's set up, but I'll check with Ryan and, and see.
Okay, thank you, Don. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay. With that, we will move on. We have a request from the East Long Meadow Rotary Club.
So in your information packet, you have a request from the Rotary Club. What they would like to do is set up a Light Up the Night program where they're bringing in sort of a vehicle parade, if you will, to display decorative lights and celebrate the holidays. And they would like to do this using the space of the high school parking lot. And then similarly to, I think, their celebration that they caught on video with the help of LCAT, they're gonna do the same thing, I believe, where they, they don't have spectators on site, but they capture this parade going through and then play it, loop it on LCAT. Would that be correct, Mr. Mackey?
I'm here. Yes, that would be correct. And since I'm, since you have my voice, webinars are limited to 100.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also asked Mr. Smith if he could convey to the Rotary Club that we'd asked that they just follow CDC guidelines when they're on school grounds, social distancing and masking. And I'm sure they will, so.
I will reiterate that as well, though, as we contact them, depending on the vote that's about to happen.
Any other questions? Hey, hearing none, interesting motion.
Move to approve the request from the East Long Rotary Club for Light Up the Night, December 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on the, in the high school parking lot.
Motion made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Beth. I, I do want to point out that the, the Rotary Club does acknowledge that they will require mask, masking up and social distancing. It's in their proposal, but we'll reiterate that with them. Motion made by Bill, second by Beth. Any other discussion? Hearing not all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. And our final order of business this evening, we have discussion on teacher subs policies, GCGA-r.
So as we were looking at this policy and we wanted to include it in the information packet and have a discussion with all of you, you heard obviously from the leadership team the challenges they're having, finding subs and making sure that they have coverage that they need, whether we be in the remote instructional model predominantly or in some other instructional model. And so one of the things that, as we've gone through looking at this policy, we wanted to propose is possibly for this, the remainder of this school year, offer a somewhat new position where we have a building permanent subs, substitutes, someone that we would post the job for each school, who would report to that school before the school begins each day and can fill any number of roles as a substitute. In cases where this has happened, and I think historically it has happened in East Long Meadow before, it may be a while, you know, maybe 18 or so years since it's happened. But basically, this person becomes somewhat of a member of the staff and the principal or assistant principal deploys the individual to any given situation that they feel they can appropriately fill for that given day. But as someone who's a member of the staff, often administrators have a heads-up of, of something that may be coming, and having a, someone who's in the building on a daily basis also has the advantage of starting to plan, say, with an individual who might be taking a medical leave or some other type of leave. And so there's advantages there. And so our thought process was possibly creating this position to help out our schools and make sure that they have some individuals on site on a daily basis that might be able to help fill absences. And our thought was pay this individual about $110 per day.
And that would just be for this year, Gordon. This is a temporary position because of the COVID-19 virus.
Right. And, and certainly we can, generally our subs report, you know, roughly 15 minutes before the start of the workday and leave basically at the end of the workday. This individual, maybe we're expecting a little bit more for that after-school planning, something of that nature.
Okay. Questions, comments?
No, I think it's a, it's a good idea. I think we may pull from that 11 subs that we have, but at least we'll know that they're not gonna say, I'll come two days this week and three days the following week. There'll be more consistency. You know, and then the kids get to know the person, too. So I do think it's a good idea.
Yeah. And still, based, relative to the 11 that you just referred to, Beth, still looking for regular, everyday subs.
Yeah.
These would be specific positions that would report to the building every day so that we know we have these set amount of subs throughout our district.
Right. Another point I was gonna make. I lost it. All right, it's time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, I think that we should leave it up to Mr. Smith and the administrators that possibly if they feel they need, one school might need two, because it's a bigger school as, you know, that they, maybe they might have two building-based subs if that's the situation. But we'll, you know, I think that we should leave it up to Mr. Smith of, with his admin of what they need for each school. If that's okay with you guys, I think that should be in it, a part of it.
Yep, I agree. So in the motion, we can leave it to the discretion of the superintendent in terms of the number per school.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, we'll take a motion, please.
Move to approve the building-based sub at $110 a day and leave it up to the discretion of the superintendent as to how many building-based subs each building needs.
And for this school year only, right?
For this school year only.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Beth. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And that carries five to zero. Thank you so very much.
I think I'd like to add it to, just one second, really quick, going on to what one of the administrators had stated. There's, you know, guys, there's college kids out there. So if anybody that's listening, you've got kids, they wanna experience something fantastic, they can come and sub in one of our schools. They might even finally have a calling for it, because there's not a lot out there unless you want to deliver something, so.
Right. And it's an all-hands-on-deck kind of situation. So we're asking anybody who's willing to give us whatever time they can, if, if they're able to offer to sub, then certainly we welcome that. And again, they can either go to School Spring or contact the schools directly, and they'll put them in the right direction. And the requirements again for that are a quarry and fingerprints really are the requirements.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Smith.
I was just gonna say, you know, I think the buildings are gonna be doing some outreach to their, their parents to see if anybody are interested, but certainly Mr. Page did that tonight. And so if you contact the building principal at any school which, in which you may want to substitute, that's a great place to start.
And they'll be happy to hear from you.
Absolutely, they will.
Yep. All hands on deck. Okay, with that, we have come to the end of our meeting. I want to thank Mr. Mackey for recording and facilitating this, this meeting. And if there's no further business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Beth. Any discussion? Hearing not all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on. We're gonna go to executive, my fault. So if I could, scratch that motion. Billy, can I withdraw that for me, please?
All right, a move that we leave open to move back into executive to return open to adjourn.
Perfect.
Excuse me, Greg.
Yeah.
You have that, you have that Zoom set up for yourselves?
We do, yes. So we'll leave this Zoom meeting, yeah, and we'll go into our own.
Make sure.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Yep. That's the way we're gonna do it. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey, quick question. Are we able to use an old Zoom link or do you have to create a new Zoom link? Okay, Mrs. Trullio is saying yes. So I, I think we can use the old.
Yes, you can. Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you all. All right. So we have a motion made and seconded for the discussion. Hearing not all is in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. We are adjourned.
No, recessed.
You need a, you need roll call to go into executive.
Yeah. We'll do that. Roll call to go to executive. We're not even adjourning, see? I'm ready to get out of here, can you tell? I'm not, though. Okay, roll call to go to executive. Antonella.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bill? And I'm a yes as well, and we are into executive. Thank you all so much.